Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless. Fall to the community, this is the time for citizens who would like to address the commissioner on a non-agenda item. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to asking staff to review the matter, asking that the matter be put on a future agenda, or responding to criticism. Do we have anything for call?
No, no.
Staff reports. Community and Recreation Services monthly report presented by Tricia Kramer, Community and Recreation Services Director.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, it's nice to see you all commissioners, it's been a little while. My rec report is in your agenda packet and I'll review just a couple of quick items. The pool is closed as a memorial for, as of Labor Day, September 2nd. Pool is closed to the public. We had a great summer, busy season, and now we're happy to have just the swim teams there and take a little bit of break from all of the excitement of the summertime at the pool. So Izzy and her team are doing a great job with the two swim teams that come after school to practice. We've got Odyssey Swim Team who's been practicing there for a number of years. And St. John Paul, the second swim team, this is their first time practicing at our facility, but so far so good. They're doing a great job getting in and out and giving each other the space they need in between. So that's going well. We continue to take some pool party reservations, we don't have a lot of them, but we do have people that are still interested in throwing birthday parties at the pool. Because the pool is still open and being maintained, we're gonna go ahead and allow those pool parties as long as our staff can work it. So we'll continue to do that, generally that peters out at the end of October, because then we start getting into having to heat the pool and I don't think any residents want to cover the cost of that. Community services, we do have our flag raising ceremony to honor the Air Force coming up on September 18th. So if any of you are available, we would love to have that show of support at the ceremony. It's at 8:15 in the morning on the front lawn of City Hall. So we welcome you to join us and to spread the word to your neighbors and family members, so we can have a good show of support for the Air Force. Our preschool is in session, they started beginning of August and they are off to a great start. So where the pool has closed, now we've got the little ones in the preschool that give us that fun environment to be around. We've got three, almost full classes, there is only one space open at the moment in our little guys and we'll have a couple of interested parties in that. So I anticipate that by next month when I see you, that spot will be full too and will be at capacity. And in addition to that, we do have finally a second preschool A that will be joining us on Monday. So we're very excited to have her join us. In terms of, I'll just jump to special events real quick. We are busy in the planning stages for all the events that will kick into high gear in the fall. We've got our concert lineup all set for the concerts at the Wig One between November and April. So you should be able to find that info on the website or reach out to us and we'll tell you who's up, but you'll start seeing that come through on social media too as we plug those. We've got our fall movies, Jackie Robinson, all lined up as well. Those will start mid-October. And then of course, we're working on Fall Fest and Christmas in the Park. And plans are going well for those, we've got not quite 90 artists that are committed to the Fall Festival and another 25 or so that have been invited and another 20 or so that are still in the jury process. So we're working hard to bring a nice festival to you guys in the fall. And of course, working on Christmas, same thing, we've got just over 60 vendors that are looking to get into our Christmas event so far. And parade applications are up, so those can be accessed online on the website. We've got, I think, about 30 to 40 parade entry applications already. I know we talked at one time about what can we do to limit the number of parade entries and maybe starting with businesses. So we did go that route, last year we had a $10 fee for business entries. This year we upped that to 50. And then if you're a Lynchfield Park business, you get a discount, $25. So we're seeing that, I think, make a little bit of a difference in some of those business entries, which hopefully will make for a nice parade, well timed parade. Other than that, I think we'll just turn it over to Pat to update you on some of the sports stuff that's going on.
Thank you Tricia, Chairman Taddy, Commissioners. We're full gear in sports, our fall, our coach pitch is under week, is in week two this week, so it's been going on over at Jackie Robinson. The numbers this year for that is good, for the first time, we started this program about four years ago and for the first time, we got all eight teams and we filled out this year, so we're excited for that. Our fall sports is also underway, practices have started this week for some teams. We're ending, right now, we have 602 kids registered through flag football, T-ball, and basketball. So our flag football, eight to 10-year-olds, for the first time in a few years, had enough to get to eight teams as well. And then our T-ball numbers, we are excited for them, our three and four age group filled up within a week and we had enough on the waitlist to create two more teams. And then they filled up again in a week and then we had enough on the waitlist to create two more teams on top of that before even registration ended. So we have a total of 200 kids in five and six and three and four T-ball combined. So it's gonna be a great T-ball season and a great fall, so we're excited for all those kids to get out there here soon. The games start at the end of September, so the 27th, so we're excited for the season to start. We also are doing sand volleyball clinics with our, the Skyhawks program. There are 13 kids that registered in that program, so that is the best numbers we've had so far. So we're getting a lot of interest in trying to get another season, we're trying to get that back up and running, do another session before we have to close for a few weeks for overseeing Aleppo and then hopefully we get some more back up and running when that park opens, so. But that's about all I have for sports.
And of course tennis is full.
Oh, tennis is, yeah. Tennis is full and they have like, each age group has about 10 kids on the waitlist, so we have a big numbers of, that goes through just through November and then the next three months are gonna open up here at the end of September, so we expect that to fill up pretty quickly.
Thank you guys. Are there any questions? Christopher Gertz?
I'm just curious, I'm not suggesting one way or the other, but for future years, we consider doing the movies a little bit closer now that we have like sort of the inclined space in the new park?
We have talked about it, it's not something that's off the table, but for now, we're gonna stick with Jackie to kind of utilize other areas of the city.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions? Is Christmas in the Park being planned for the new park?
Yes.
City Swim, nice.
So all of our major events will now.
Shifted over this year?
Yeah, it started with the spring one and now this year you'll see pretty much all of them be in the park.
Christopher Gertz? What will the parade route be like, or is that too far off topic to ask?
So we've had the discussions about that, it looks like we will have the same basic parade route, still come up Old Lynchfield Road, but we'll come north and into Lynchfield Square, so that we can kind of go along Village down La Loma. Did I get that right? Yes.
Roundabouts may be difficult for us.
Yeah, so we're making sure that that is a viable option, but right now, that's the discussion. Yeah.
That was my question.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. Public Works Monthly Report presenter, Mr. Kyle Ames, Public Works Director.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, members of commission, good to see everybody again. So it's nice to see everybody. Village Park and Turtle Park shade structures have been ordered, a little bit of an update, they actually been delivered. So I think install will be two to three weeks from now. I'm still working on altitude recreation and get that kind of scheduled out. So once you start seeing the construction fence, I think it's go time, so we'll get those installed. Big topic there for why was a tear very late, completely removed the aquatic weed, the brittle net. So that's completely removed, it's a slow process, it's a, I know I received a lot of questions about why does it take so long to kind of eliminate this aquatic weed? And it's a slow growing weed that starts at the surface and it grows and it chases sunlight. So it's a long process, they treat it as long, they're not killing aquatic life off. See, I've been working with some directional bore companies to install some bore in, or some roadways for irrigation installs. A lot of the older parts of the city don't have modern irrigation systems right now, so currently we use staff to hand water a lot of our orange trees and some of the common area trees by hand and that's time consuming, big expense with payroll, stuff like that. So trying to get a modern system into this is kind of ease, not only staffing issues that we currently have and you know, it's a cost effective issue too. The China wall additions have been completed over by Scout Park, that was an additional wall that it's kind of development with Lynchfield Square, it was more of a privacy issue, noise visual thing. During that project, we decided to do the pony wall around Scout Park to kind of keep the little safe. We have a lot of golf cart traffic that come through there for the Wig One. We did have a few resident complaints that people not paying attention while they're driving through there, you know, we've had a couple of close calls, so that was a decision that we decided to do was a small pony wall to kind of keep everybody safe in that area. And then west coast, there's a continuing the palm trees, they're about 75% completed. They have Old Lynchfield left just north of Fairway, south of Bird Lane to finish and then they have all of Old Lynchfield to continue. So I actually spoke to them on Monday, they said about two to three weeks it should be wrapped up. So keep in mind during, down Lynchfield Road, there will be a lot of traffic control during that time. They're doing a rolling TCP, so it won't be a full closure, it'll be a moving closure as it, during these palm trees. And with that, I do not get any answering questions.
Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
I had a question about the engineered wood fiber for playground. Is, which playground, is this just supplementing what's already there for existing playgrounds?
It's additional that we have to add, there's a fall safe requirement for public playgrounds to keep the children safe, if it's not meeting the requirements, we have that. Usually what we do in the past years, we've had it delivered, my staff has installed it. This year, we're gonna actually have the company come in and they blow it in with a back truck. Let us pull it in, fill it in, fluff it up, whatever it needs. It's quite expensive unfortunately, so I'm still working on pricing with them. And there's a lot of cubic yards that need to be installed, so it's a little bit of a process. I didn't really anticipate it this year happening, but nonetheless, we'll get it figured out.
Is that at all of our parks?
Most of them, yeah, most of them. The two, three biggest ones are Turtle Park, Aleppo Park, and Scout Park, I think, additionals.
Stag is still sand, so it doesn't apply.
No, actually Stags is EWF.
We did upgrade it.
Yeah, once, three years ago, when we switched up the playground equipment, that's, we converted over to EWF.
Second question, for when the shade structures are installed at Turtle Park and Village Park, will the playgrounds be closed for any month?
They will, and we will be posting to social media a week or two before this project starts. We are gonna install some construction fencing, probably a few days before, they gotta come in to dig the footers. They did let me know, it takes about a week per park, so we'll close one part down, once that one's finished, we'll move to the next.
Are there any other questions? You had mentioned the irrigation system, sir, for the trees? Is that, would that be installing an entire line? Holy Moses.
So currently, we need about 1,800 linear feet of sleeves put on the roadways, individual cul-de-sacs, streets, driveways. I don't have the total linear feet of pipe that we have to put in, I can't remember off the top of my head. I've measured it probably three or four times now by now, but it is, it's gonna be a long-term project. It may even bleed into next fiscal year just because of the cost. But in five years, it's definitely gonna pay for itself in labor.
For sure. Are there any other questions? Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes, presenter Tricia Kramer, Community and Recreation Services Director. Discussion and possible action to approve the June 12th regular meeting minutes. It's been that long, everybody.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, the minutes are in your agenda packet and I will just wait for the chair to entertain the nation.
Christopher Gertz?
To motion to approve the minutes from the June 12th meetings.
Well, second. Are there any questions? All in favor of approving the June 12th minutes, please say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, minutes have been approved. KOS, Christmas tree decorations, this sounds like a fun one, everybody. Presenter Kyle Ames, Public Works Director. Discussion and possible action to recommend a KOS, am I saying that right? Is it KOS, Christmas tree decor package for approval by council?
Chairman Taddy, if I may, just make one correction. We do have on there the formality of for approval by council, but this agenda item and the next one both fall well below the threshold of having to present to council, it can be handled by the city manager. So just to put you guys, make you aware that it would be more direction to staff to put that to city manager.
Understood, thank you for that.
Thank you Chairman Taddy, members of commission, so KOS actually stands for King of Strings. So the fun part, this KOS tree, we are actually gonna be the first city on the West Valley with this tree. It's a brand new tree, it's already been purchased, we've actually already taken delivery of it, but we need the commissioners' direction on what color theme we would like to go with. Staff has their choice, but we would like to hear from the commissioners. Keep in mind the things that are labeled as custom, that's an additional cost. The ones that are already labeled with their names are already included in the package, we just need to choose what patch. If we can try to refrain from the custom colors, that would be the best. So I can allocate those funds to other things for decorations. And I apologize, there's a lot.
There is.
Christopher Gertz? What else likewise are we putting in around the same space so that we consider how this might fit with?
This isn't current, this is, the KOS tree is actually gonna replace the flagpole in Lynchfield Square. So this tree is gonna be 20, 28 feet tall and about 16 feet at the base. So this is just, we're gonna be removing the flagpole, the whole reason why we did that during Lynchfield Square development was that's gonna be a removable flagpole. And then we install this large Christmas tree during the holiday seasons.
Okay.
I'm still working on the additional decorations, I think that really kind of depends on what colors we choose for this tree and whatever funds allow.
Should I tell you which color package I would like?
Yes.
I would like the gumdrop. And if there's a choice on lights, Kyle, can we go with a warm white rather than those really annoying bright, like I'm being interrogated by the police lights?
I would 100% second that, but if I could add to it, whether we go warm or cold, if we could just do, be consistent, would be, would be super right, because the mix of warm and cold is off.
We'll, we'll see this and I'll give you a little direction of what staff is, a lot of us are old school, so most of the shows Christmas morning.
Alright, I gotta look.
I'll say, I like something with color, right? And I think that goes better with our, our city logos rather colorful. That's probably the closest to the logo, not that we need to match that, but.
There is. What's the difference, I guess just the purple, is that gumdrop versus Christmas morning, just the purple?
I think so, I'm zooming in.
It's like a different shade of green as well?
Yeah.
Maybe we could do this if it would be okay, does anybody, we could just pick some and go, can we eliminate this because nobody wants it, right? So is anybody really interested in Snore?
Personally, I'd eliminate everything except Christmas morning and gumdrop, myself.
Okay, alright, good, no, is anybody really interested in Glacial Pine? Alright, let's see, this is, narrow it down a little bit. Where does Timeless go? No, lost my front page for Timeless, alright, agave, anybody in favor, looking for agave?
No.
Timeless, which is the gold and silver one?
No.
This is getting easy, woodland noir, noir?
Noir, no.
I think we don't, probably don't want to do custom, right? Because let's be cost conscious.
Yeah.
Now, we've got candy cane, drum, gumdrop.
Sugar cookie.
Oh, should I miss sugar cookie, I'm sorry. Sugar cookie, which looks like timeless to me to be honest.
Sugar cookie, okay, sugar cookie? I think we're all in favor of the namesake, but perhaps not the decor.
Okay, candy cane? Andy, it's going, alright, so gumdrop and Christmas morning, which we've had people express interest in, alright? So let's talk about those.
I agree with gumdrop, just throwing my two cents in there, I like the colorful notes of it.
I don't have a strong opinion between these two, I think like all people, I don't.
This is, essentially this is close to the height of the tree as well.
Okay. Does anybody have strong opinions on either of these? I think we have two in favor of, just wanna do an up and down, like who wants gum bubble versus Christmas morning?
Is the gumdrop, is the difference the size? Like that picture looks like it has a bunch of.
Oh, the color.
Or we just thought colors, is that difference the color or is it like the size of the things? To tell you the truth, I didn't think about the size, but it does appear as though there are different sizes in gumdrop, do they look bigger?
Yeah, I think Christmas morning has a lot of the smaller bulbs, it looks like gumdrop's got the larger ones.
Look at the tree pictures, right? Because that gives you a better idea.
The most realistic of.
But then you get a better feel, like we said, you have a mixed bag of large and small. I do like first, first pass and yes, I tended to agree that gumdrop looks better, but as I look at Christmas morning actually on the tree, I think the varied size ornaments look really nice. I don't know how you feel about that.
I'm looking at gumdrop right now. On the tree, I might not be such a fan of gumdrop, to be perfectly honest.
It looks like it's a, like a piece of candy with sprinkles on it, right? A little bit?
Feels like a birthday cake to me.
A little bit.
Biggest trees too, the picture is of one of the biggest trees and that's well taller than the building behind it. Whereas like, you know, candy cane, these bulbs look huge, but these trees are small. We're gonna have like a 28-foot tree, maybe we want to put ornaments on it.
And the gumdrop picture with lights looks better than the gumdrop picture without lights. But I do like the mixed sizes of Christmas morning, but yeah. I could do either.
Candy cane, sorry, candy cane on the tree actually looks really good too. Sorry for like kind of bringing that one back up, but it actually looks kind of neat on the tree.
Alright, I'm gonna go look at that one.
That's the white.
Yeah.
Do you have one handy?
Do you have one handy?
Kind of. Oh yeah, the double.
Oh, it's also very, it's also some cute little.
It did look big though, because those trees are kind of shorter.
Sure, sure.
It's true, but this picture held it much larger tree. Which makes it look, yeah. Do you guys have them handy? Christopher, Cobra? Vice Chair Phillips, do you have them handy also, the candy cane trees?
Just getting there right now, trying to make it bigger so I can see, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, I don't have a problem.
And just for clarity, were, this would just be for the tree? Or would this be for ancillary decorations around the town?
Just, just for the tree at this time.
And are they gonna be the ones that we've kind of seen in the past around town? Because that'll kind of match like what's already put up?
Correct. All the, all the decorations that we have out here are essentially gonna be the same this year.
That's helpful.
Maybe additional few, a couple of new ones, but the, the Christmas tree decoration is gonna be solo by itself, Lynchfield Square current.
Yeah, I'm good with candy cane.
How did the discussion with staff go, did you guys, were you all pretty aligned to Christmas morning? Yeah?
I sent it around with my email, got everybody's feedback, 75% of it was Christmas morning. Let's see the Christmas morning again, let's say it looks.
It looks much better on the screen than on the print, it looks pretty dull on the print. You're right. You're right.
That tree's probably twenty-two, twenty-three feet tall. Pretty close to the size that we're.
That looks good with those sized ornaments. I would, I would, I don't know, motion's the right word. To eliminate gumdrop too, simply because of like uniformity of the sprinkles. All right, so we're talking about candy cane and Christmas morning. It's a matter of more colors or less colors, really.
We're just looking to give staff direction here, because I don't think this will ever come to council, so can we just give them say one A, one B and? Sounds like everybody's kind of bought in on those two.
I'm happy to let staff choose between these two.
Everybody else? Vice Chair Phillips?
That's fine. I guess my first vote would be candy cane, but either one's fine.
Candy cane and Christmas morning, two of those two?
Yeah, so. Make a motion to recommend to staff to, with their discretion, choose between Christmas morning and candy cane for the Christmas tree decoration.
Are there any questions? All in favor? Right, I think the staff. I suppose it was two, Christmas morning and candy cane.
Which is good because we already ordered it.
Temporary public art installation presenter. This is Tricia Kramer, Community and Recreation Services Director. Discussion and possible action regarding the design concept for the H O L A. Temporary Public Art Installation in Litchfield Square Park.
Thank you Chairman Taddy and Commissioners. H O L A would be just what you're thinking, Ola. And that's an acronym for highlighting our local arts in the West Valley. I don't have off the top of my head, the last time we spoke on this, I, it might have been in April. When we were discussing the opportunity that we had through a group of, uh, West Valley cities. Have gotten together to, um, each do a temporary public art installation in their cities. And pair up with a local artist to do that. We met in December and had a panel and reviewed the applications from the artists. And I'm pleased to share that Litchfield Park was paired up with, uh, Betsy, Betsy Andrews Etchar, who is here tonight to talk to us about her design concept. Uh, she's been working with, uh, gathering community input. We had a survey. Um, around April, end of April, May timeframe, um, that was put out to the community. And had over a hundred, uh, responses. So that was a great number of responses. From the community to get her started and point her in the direction that our residents would like to see for the artwork. And she was out again in July, interacting with the community at our Sparkle in the Square. And has been meeting with, with many people to gather input both formally and informally. So she's here tonight to, um, share with you her design concept in the hopes that this is something that you would like to move forward with. And with that, um, I'll have Betsy come on up to the podium and, and chat with you guys.
Thank you, Tricia. I think sort of having me here, Betsy Andrews Etchar and I think you can all hear me. So this is, as Tricia said, a preliminary design concept and, um, we thought some talk about it and move forward with making it happen. We started, um, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be clear. We started with a survey and, uh, the public input indicated that, um, that Litchfield Park residents, um, wanted interactivity, um, whimsy. Something that had to do with the city's history of agriculture. And, um, some were interested in expressing the value of families, uh, with the show part. And so, um, I, I don't even know if this is worth it or not. So this is what, um, what we've come up with. This is, also this is temporary. This, um, would be installed in Litchfield Square Park. In the blue area that was originally intended in the water feature. It will be up for two years and then uninstalled. So the budget includes everything. Installation, uninstallation, fabrication, um, interaction with the community, materials. All of that. And, um, it's, um, intended to be finished by the end of the year or maybe it will be finished much sooner. And basically it is, I, um, I got some input from the Wade Wong. And Bill Jones, who was really awesome over there, donated some used golf balls, which my son was trying to come here. But I did not let them. And I'm working with them and it was a medal. To do this culture that in, was inspired by, uh, cotton wool and it's open stage. Such a beautiful flower. And of course, Litchfield Park is based on cotton. And, um, so that's the, the reason it looks the way it does. And, um, the golf balls will be painted, um, each one will have, um, will be colored two colors. Each side will have a different color, colors of the sunset, very bright and cheerful. Um, and they'll be able to rotate on either rods or aluminum. After, um, having holes drilled in them. It works very whole. And the paint is Core Bixirion Imperial Paint, so it lasts ultra violet. Doesn't, it doesn't fade. Um, it's good stuff. So that would be interactive. These are two designs. I'm working to get estimates from fabricators. It's an ongoing process. Sometimes something that you don't think is expensive turns out to be expensive. Trying to figure out whether it should be pressed a little bit or rods that are curved. Um, but basically the golf balls would be struck on this and passersby would be able to rotate them and change the look of it. So, um, it would allow people to take agency in what this looks like as they're walking by and have fun. And one of the designs you could actually play to tact of using the rotating the golf balls. Um, it would also have a QR code that will link to a page on, um, the Litchfield Park Historic Society's website. Um, I've been working with Chuck and I heard on that and he knows way more about that kind of stuff than I do. But there are some wonderful old photographs of, um, families and the, the kids of the original cotton workers playing marbles. And, um, and it's a wonderful, um, text in, uh, some of the books that I found over at the Stroh Society. And that could be, you know, you could, okay, put your phone on that and then access all this stuff that otherwise you have to jump over to the store, right? To get, very few people do that. And though, so that kind of brings in the importance of, um, games and family. And I mean, Litchfield Park golf balls, people play games in Litchfield Park. And it's important, an important part of strength in the community, um, that we don't really think about that much. It's something we all have in common, whether, whatever we believe in, we like to play. And often involves balls. And so this will be, let's see, what else? And I'm hoping if the budget allows to include some mosaic, which is really fun to do to the public. The, I have some more public interaction could be probably at this room and work on the golf balls. Public could help me with that. I'm also going into the three Litchfield Park Elementary School. Thirteen days, a few days in each school and I'm working with those kids. I do this anyway with my company Color Wheels. This year I'm going to Litchfield Park Elementary, Barbara Romy and Dreaming Summit. And talking about public art and doing a mock public art project with the kids. And they're going to find out about this and about history of the park. And it's going to be really fun. Um, but I'm hoping to interact with almost all the kids, uh, from first through fifth grade with that. And I think that's just as found. Does it? And I'm welcome, welcoming input.
Just for reference guys, the, um, the diagram that you see up here is a slight revision to the one that came to you in your packet originally. So just a, a little bit different and we will have that, um, on the website and I'll send it to you as well. And Betsy does have handouts of the new one if you wanted to take those home with you tonight too.
Yeah, I have, I have paper copies there.
I, I can't see the, the most current revision, but I'm looking at what's on there. Betsy, I love it. It's colored, it's cotton, it's touchable, it moves. I'm so excited. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. I don't know where to look.
Yeah, I know. It's okay.
Commissioner Faith?
I, I think this is amazing, really. It's something that our city has lacked for years, thirty years at least, you know? So I think it's great that we're bringing this back and I appreciate your involvement as well as Tricia. Found or got us involved in this somehow. And I, I'm in no position to, to critique the art part of it, you know? Like I think.
Well, thank you.
Does the art.
The fun part of it, it is, it is such a community effort so far. It's been, lots of people. It's just going to be ongoing and hopefully everyone will have a sense of agency in it.
Vice Chair Gertz?
I guess people as well, I'm not also, not in a great position to critique art. My only sort of just reaction, I would say, is that the, the, the rounder approach just feels more organic to me. I don't know, that's.
You have very good taste. That's the more expensive one. I'm trying to figure out how to do that one and keep the cost down, but, um, and the other one could be made more organic as well. It's an ongoing process working with the fabricators and I really appreciate any input like.
Yeah, for sure. And then I'm assuming the base, like don't, don't reach much into the base. It'll be something that can't be tipped over, right?
Yes, I've got a structural engineer. One of the reasons I talk so much is because the whole thing will be stamped by a structural engineer, a local.
Is it something we will entertain bolting into the ground? I mean, just that, because otherwise you're going to have one heck of a base.
No, that's what we, if I, that's what we talked about with Keith and with Derek, the structural engineer. At first glance, he said, yeah, you should be able to have a, maybe a quarter inch plate bolted into the five inches of concrete. That's that substrate. He's got the asphalt and, um, he's going to make sure it doesn't fall.
Are there any other questions? Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Commissioners report on current events.
Was it action item there? That we need to.
Oh, pardon me. Are we, we're just recommending to move forward with the designs as presented to City Council, correct?
That's what staff would ask of you if you're in favor of that, yes.
So I feel like the commission is in favor of moving forward with the recommendations. However, I do want to ask, is everyone in favor of moving forward with the recommended designs as shown?
So motion.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And so we will move forward with the recommendations as shown. Thank you, sir. Commissioners report on current events. This is the time, missionaries may present a brief summary on current events. The commission may not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take any legal action on the information presented. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four-three-one dot O two. Vice Chair Phillips?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Cobreth?
Nothing to report this month.
Commissioner Gertz? Commissioner Faith?
I'm looking forward to the events back, getting back in the, uh, winter, but otherwise, no.
Your actual last name. Giordano. Commissioner Giordano?
Here is a council representative to sit on this. We, uh, decided to make sure we had council members sitting on P and we already had P and Z and D R P. But here to, you know, here to observe, assist and obviously at this portion, if there were any questions or anything that you maybe wanted to know that was going, I know you have some insight to council with your, your father. But, um, if there was any, anything specific to council that you had any questions that maybe I could answer for you, I'm happy to do so. If not, there's a lot of moving parts. Uh, everything's going on the hillside, on the, excuse me, on the, along the hilltop. We've got the first lot getting ready to go vertical. Second one should be going by December. We should be moving on lot thirteen and fourteen really soon. We've got to have a library open by next August, Performing Arts Center. Uh, the high school, the performing arts school. So just, uh, council meetings are extremely long. And sometimes twice enough, but it's, uh, it's a very, I, I tell people not to mention the work that's going to happen on Camelback Park, putting the wall out to the street. This, this, I mean, I, I know some of you have been here a long time. I've been here twelve years, but it feels like this fiscal year, which we just started July first, we're going to have the most, single most growth and development and change. Occur note and the roundabout that's going to go in at the entrance to the hilltop. Uh, the potential roundabout on the backside of Sun Health, uh, the five-year project we're looking at on Camelback Road. It's, it's going to be, uh, going to be a really busy year, a really busy next three years, but it's a, it's a fun time to live in this city. I, uh, unfortunately my kids are sixteen and fourteen now, so about the time we get it all going, they'll be heading out. But I think it's, uh, uh, council's, council's commitment. We have a really strong, aligned council that is solely focused on keeping this city special, keeping it Litchfield Park and preserving our way of life. So, um, yeah. So if there was any specific questions that anybody wanted to know, um, yeah. And then there was a, something brought up earlier about when the parks are closing, uh, communications director was hired by the city. Um, that was a big issue with council, um, just trying to create a more proactive approach to communicating, whether it be simple things as, uh, park closures to when police incidents happen or, you know, when the helicopter a few months ago was flying around. Just people need to get their information more proactively from us as a city and not from Facebook and conjecture. So, but yeah, it's a, it's, it's a fun time to be living here right now. And, you know, as the rest of the towns encroach on us and build in and, you know, the, over here by the library. We, we can't control that a self-storage went in there. That's happened, Dell, but, but we can sure control within our, you know, boundaries of Litchfield Park. So anyways, sorry if I was a long ramble, but happy to be here and appreciate you guys for all volunteering your time and, um, giving back to the city. That's important. If we don't have our own residents engaged in local governance and, and I would add too, to the art project. That is a, this is just the beginning. It's a, it's a huge initiative on council to, to get more local arts and art projects established. So I think this is fantastic. So.
Thank you, sir.
May I, may I say something? I have met Yosha and she's our new communications person. We are so fortunate to have her. She's amazing. And she's going to make a huge difference for us, I think. Yeah, she's, she's amazing.
So I, I, I think I speak for everybody on the commission when I say what an exciting time. To sort of second what Councilman James said. Holy cow, the amount of development that we're gonna see over the course of the next year, year and a half, it's, it's really incredible. Um still looking forward to potentially, maybe when it cools off a little bit more, a tour that we had discussed previously of the hilltop, or maybe if there's a better time when the construction lines up or for the commission. Um really looking forward to upcoming events in the park. This is really the time of year where the, once it starts to cool off slightly, you you start to really get a feel for um how amazing it really is here and excuse me, just looking forward to everything that we have coming up. And thank you and your crew so much for all the work you guys put in. So topics for referral to the council, I don't believe we, other than our previous votes. That only leaves one more item. Adjournment, we don't have to do it anymore, we decided, okay, so we are at adjournment. And we are adjourned.